Oops, call to order.
Craig Stalling.
Here.
Tiffany Glanville.
Here.
Karen Taylor.
Julio Flores.
Here.
Sean T. Brody.
Here.
Aisha Clark.
Montana Naves.
Kimberly Oliver.
Here.
Thank you. Good evening. As Chairman of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order the July 24th, 2018 regular meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television audience. The Board of Superintendent and I are pleased that you have joined us to celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operation of the Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting and all items will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted by, has been posted as required by law. As the Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. They are the time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public address by the Board. Decorum and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since this is legally mandated that these proceedings be accurately recorded, I may ask from periodically or time to time that you turn down your electronic devices if they should interfere with recording capabilities. I am pleased that you've taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of the school system and we thank you for your interest in the Hartford Public Schools. Now, Mr. Flores will read this in Spanish.
Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden esta reunión ordinaria de la junta del 24 de julio 2018. Damos una calidad bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y las superintendentes se complacen que se han unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información, y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos, y nombramientos de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público de dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y absténganse de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestra capacidad de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar y les damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Thank you so much. All right. And we're going to go into public dialogue. We have a script, I guess. You can, Ms. Oliver, read it.
We, as the Board, in collaboration with the superintendent and district leadership, are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of HPS. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously and to that end, we will have staff available for immediate follow-up if follow-up is required. After you have finished speaking, a staff member will come up to you ready to take your information down. They will follow up with an update within 48 hours. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak and at the two-minute mark, Ms. Santiago will ring the bell letting you know you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now, Mr. Julio Flores will read this in Spanish.
Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. Tenemos personal disponible para seguimiento inmediato para los casos que lo requieren. Una vez que usted haya terminado de hablar, un miembro del personal estará disponible para tomar su información. Esa persona investigará su caso y se comunicará con usted dentro de 48 horas. Le recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando han pasado dos minutos, la señorita Santiago sonará el timbre dejándole saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios.
Hiya, Cynthia.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Hiya Cynthia. I want to talk to you guys about making sure that you're taking some time to breathe during the summertime because I know how hectic it can be. So, as always, I want to thank you all for, you know, doing this, serving the community. But I'm here to speak on Hartford High. And we are without a leader at this point. So, I'm here to make sure that we have a temporary person in place until we can find a permanent person. Everyone is up in arm and saying, what do we do now? Where do we go? Who, who is our leader? You know, and we can't have a school that our teachers are wondering what's next. You know, stability is really, really important. And when you don't have any stability, there is always a potential for issues, a lot of stuff going on. So, I'm hoping, Superintendent, that you can, you know, find somebody temporary to put in that position. You know, it's, it would have been the best thing to do that when Mike was appointed somewhere else, that there was another person appointed in his position. I'm not sure who is at the building at this time that can step in his position. I'm really concerned about that indeed. So, I'm hoping that we can get something going there soon because it's, it's almost August and we need to make sure that teachers are feeling that, you know, they have, they have a leader that they can trust to do what needs to be done. The other issue is that I'm concerned about the fact that I recently was told that the body, not the body shop, the mechanic shop at Buckley was closed down. I'm not sure if any of you are aware of it and why was that so? Was it because there wasn't enough kids going there or what is it? Because we need to look more like some trade for our kids because we must face fact that not all our kids are going off to college. And you don't necessarily have to go off to college to make big money, okay? I mean, our plumbers, our electricians, or mechanic, we know how expensive it is to repair cars these days. So, if kids can learn those things, we need to provide those opportunities for them in our building and making sure that they're leaving the school with a life skill and function out there. So, I think it's really important for you to look into that. I'm not sure how true it is and I think it's probably true because why would this person bring it up like that? So, please look into that and make sure if that's the case that, you know, something is being done. And I know for sure that Hartford High has a lot of kids coming in this year and we need to make sure we provide things in that building that they can actually learn something from. Too many of our kids are walking across that aisle graduating and they're not really functioning all that well, okay? We seriously need to look at the grades that we're giving these kids and say, yeah, you're graduating. And I know previous superintendent has done this and things like that, but how long can we go on like this? Because we, we know where we are going to take care of them if we didn't make sure they can read and write at this point. So, I'm hoping that, you know, we can look at all of these things and make sure it's happening. The DCF issue, I'm, I'm hoping that you, as superintendent, can form a smaller community to investigate some of these things that may not be big instead of sending everything into DCF and that's clog up the whole system. I'm hoping you'll have a place in your department that we can look at those small things, small, you know, that we don't have to send into DCF because it's a waste of our resources, a waste of our teachers sitting around doing nothing. So, let's look at those, let's be smart about what we are doing. We don't just have everything we send into DCF. So, let's be, you know, conscious about what we are doing for our, our staff and our children and, you know, things like that. So, I think that's all I have to say for now, but I'm hoping, the swimming pool is getting along, it's coming along at Hartford High. Things are working out and so I'm hoping that it will be ready for the kids when school open and things like that. So, all I'm concerned right now is to make sure we have a leader for Hartford High and that's important. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Thank you. And I totally was going to do the same thing until I realized that she didn't push the button. And thank you, Hiya, for that. I appreciate it. Okay, so we're going to move on. Report to the chair. I don't have a report. I'm going to, I just want to make a public apology to Julie Wild, our attorney, for my actions. I think a few months back, I was, I was rude and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge that and say, I'm sorry, please, I apologize for that. I wish there were more people, so maybe I'll do it again. But I just wanted to apologize in front of everyone for my actions because I, it was not called for. And other than that, I'll say the rest of my stuff for another time in another meeting. So, that concludes the report of the chair. Madam Superintendent.
Testing. I just wanted to say that. Good evening, Board of, Board and Community. It's good to see some of you here. I know that we're on summer break. I know, I hope the principal of the school is not here, but nonetheless, I want to acknowledge him for hosting us this evening. I'm going to actually, as part of my report, review some of the updates from June up until today, some of these updates you might have already heard of given that I've, I've shared these with you, but, you know, the community and our viewers to keep everyone updated. I want to begin by acknowledging our senior leadership team and many, many who are here and our school leaders as they continue to work on finalizing their department-based and their school-based improvement plans. We ended the year and I want to congratulate our school leaders for their deep level of engagement in creating our shared non-negotiable practices. You know, we, you know that we have one of our goals around literacy and so there's agreement that we're going to really narrow in, in the lower grades on guided reading. A guided reading is a, is a reading model and process and then also close reading for our higher six to 12. And so, that's going to inform the work that is done at the school level with our data teams. I mentioned that we have launched, probably now three weeks since we launched district-wide the data dashboards. And it's something that it's available for principals. There are tools that allow immediate access to data at the school level and, you know, we're able to see whether our students are there, the changes that are happening every single day, suspensions, referrals, all of this data is now available and the tool. So, we're going to spend some time developing capacity with our principals and then that's going to connect to the district level commitment that we have around the school process reviews. We want to make sure that our team at Central Office is engaging in routine monitoring of the work that's happening in the schools. And so, we also then will be able to use our data dashboards. Part of the work was also informed, part of the work around our district improvement plan was also informed by our community members, our parent leadership council, our SGCs and community leaders. We did hold two forums closer to the end of the school year, June 25th and 26th, and we had over 80 participants to give us feedback on, on the plans. And there were some, some trends that, that emerged as to what we could do better as, as a district. And communications was, was an area. People felt that there are good things that are happening in the district and we're, we're missing an opportunity to let people know what those things are. And then that's for us to communicate more and then to also communicate on ways that we can educate parents on, on helping students with academic and behavior strategies. Partnerships, our community wants a clearer definition on what it is to be a partner. And our, our parents that were there and our community members talked about alignment that they felt that we're making a positive step toward making sure that everything that we do aligns together so that we don't have 50 to 46 schools doing 46 different things, that there are some elements of our work that are shared so that we can be able to determine, are we progressing and how can we learn from and with each other? The work that was done with the leaders and with our community and our parents has been used by Central Office leaders and so they have, our senior leaders have a deadline of Ju-, July 31st to submit to me the very specific department plans. Those department plans will include all of the detailed action steps that they are going to engage in in order to get us to the goals that we want to achieve. I'll be speaking a little more about that at this Friday's board retreat. Another update, Bar Foundation Grant Award. The grant's title is Engage New England: Doing High School Differently. The Bar Foundation is a foundation based out of Boston. They have committed $30 million over five years to support districts who want to see how they can do high school differently to meet the needs of the students that are not being successful in high school. We had our kickoff meeting actually this morning. We met with the education leader from, from the Bar Foundation and Spring Point is the name of the technical assistance provider. This $150,000 grant that we received is a first-year planning grant and it is identified for Hartford Public High School. As, as I've looked at the data, you know, Hartford Public's high school data around chronic absenteeism and suspension continues to rise. And so, since I submitted the grant, we submitted the grant probably six months ago. We were very intentional in identifying a population for us to think through how can we program differently for our students that are overage, undercredited, and not engaged in school. And so, this year is the planning year with potential for getting two additional years at a much higher grant commitment from, from the foundation. So, the work will entail planning teams that, that will include not only teachers, leaders, students, of course, and community members. And I will continue to report along the way. Lastly, I will give an update on our partnership, our Boundless Partnership between Hartford Public Schools and Hartford Public Library. As you know, Boundless is a multifaceted partnership between the library and us that was launched in 2015. And this is an opportunity to have students have access to not only the physical but also the digital content resources at the libraries and in our schools. And so, we engaged in collaborative planning to take Boundless to the next level and to pilot next year, next school year, having the Boundless program at one of our schools. And so, Hartford Public Library did receive a grant from the Hartford Public, Hartford Foundation for Public Giving and we engaged in several discussions, several meetings, and we've identified Rossin as one of the pilot sites given that they already have, you know, separate entrance. And the, the grant is going to cover a librarian that's going to be hired by the library and is going to be available for, for Rossin to support students and teachers. And it will be also made available in after, during after-school hours. Again, we'll continue to give you updates, but as you know, we were thinking of ways to leverage the partnership and extend the partnership. This aligns not only to our hope that we can increase our commitment to increasing not only literacy but also to expanding our partnerships with our community. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, so, we're going to move on to the business agenda. Oh, we don't have a student report. Our student report's not here. Forgive me. Thank you. I saw you in the corner of my eye. So, we're going to go to the business agenda item number one, which is the Contract Continuation Approval, Power School Group LLC, $273,106. The Power School Group LLC provides a student information system which enables the district to collect, store, analyze, and report student-level data, including but not limited to enrollment, school membership, attendance, discipline infractions, and course grades. Madam Superintendent.
Yes. In addition to Power School being the student management system for us, we have had additional aspects of, of this part of grant, which is to expand on our use of our assessments. We've seen, we saw the need to really have a centralized place for our assessments, not only so that our teachers can house the data but also for them to track and monitor how students are doing. And so, not only does this contract includes the regular use, if you will, of Power School around managing the students' information, but it also extends to the assessment management piece of it as well.
Okay. Are there any questions about this item? Ms. Brody.
Does that new management piece, is it something that parents would be able to see or benefit from?
The data, the assessment management?
Yes.
I can, I can let Abby speak to it, not necessarily parents in terms of the, the assessments and how students are doing on the assessment, but I know that there is an interface with Power School and our, and our parents. So, can you speak to both of those, Abby?
Good evening, everyone. So, because it is integrated with Power School, assessment being a module of the other part of the student information system, it integrates so that if students are taking assessments, their assessments can be flagged to go into Parent Portal. So, there's actually a student portal and there's a parent portal piece of Power School which would be able to integrate test results that the district wants to share with parents and students. They can do that.
But not, not the assessment?
The assessment piece as well. So, that, that could include, if we wanted to load state assessments in there, it could, it could allow parents to view the state assessments but also the interim or unit assessments that their children are taking as well so they can see how they're doing on classroom standards.
And the interims are quarterly?
The interims are on a quarterly basis and unit assessments are between those as well, but it would be a district decision whether we want to share those with parents or save them for discussions at parent-teacher conferences.
On that same subject, I don't know that the Power School even come, if it comes up in like the professional development because the, the issue, not that really I'm having that, my child is having is that everything is not being uploaded. So, I'm like, you didn't turn it on? And it's like, oh, I got to get my teacher in. I asked my teacher and they're constantly, it's a good tool, but if, it's something with them grades when they're not in and parents are in there because we get, well, I get, you have the option to get the emails. So, if you get your emails and you clicking on each class and you're seeing this, that's good, but if it's not being updated, so I'm hoping that some kind of way we are encouraging our principals to encourage our teachers, especially for high school, to get that data in there because parents are looking and I'm wondering why, because if, if the date has passed, I believe, and it's not entered, it looked like a F, but it's not great, it's just, so that's really important to, to parents too, for it to be used appropriately.
Right. So, your comment is referring specifically to Power School Gradebook and our current practice is that teachers are required to enter the end-of marking period grade at a minimum. It's, it's really a school decision about recording assignments on a more frequent basis than that, but definitely timely recording and reporting of student progress is important to us and they should not be waiting until parents and students are asking for their grade to be reporting them.
I don't know if we're just requiring to, if that's the minimum and we're paying $273,000 that we should, I think that as a, if we're just requiring them as a minimum at the end of the marking period, not if we paying this kind of money, I think it should be used for, if you're going to use it for the end of the marking period, we can look at the end of the marking period, but if, if you're going to be uploading grades and then not, so it's like either or. We're either going to use it one way or use it the other.
One, one other thing that I will add is around our focus to monitor at the high school level on-track.
Yes.
Performance of our students. And so, you know, a tool is, is only good as, as it's updated, right, on, on a regular basis. And so, we have to then think about whether or not our monitoring around students being on track through the marking periods and then to graduate and progress through the years is accurate data. So, that's something that we will look, that we will look into.
I also wanted to share that our district's marking period calendar does include a midterm, a midterm notice in the middle of the marking period as well, so grades should be recorded at that point in time also.
It's, it's excellent, it's an excellent tool. It really helps for, for parents to know, but if we're not, if we're going to keep on looking in there, taking the time we want to see, but I think it's an excellent tool because they could make, you know, comment and you can communicate, especially the upper, when kids are in middle school and high school, they start having multiple teachers. So, for a parent to reach out to multiple teachers, instead you can look and know and see the progress, but I just hope we're using it to, to the best of its ability. Thank you.
Any other question? I'll just add my small one. Just to piggyback off of what Ms. Brody said, if the information's not being inputted into Power School in a, I don't want to call it inefficient, but in less of an efficient way, how does that impact teachers when they're dealing with lesson plans and curriculums and all the rest of that stuff? Because my experience, you know, I was told, you know, I'm, I have to deal with my lesson plans and I don't have time to put things in Power School. And this conversation was a result of how do I help my student? So, if I don't know the standards, I can't help him achieve the standards. And so, how, how, how are we working on that balance? Because again, to, to everyone's point here, it is a very good tool. We spend a lot of money on it and we're not using it in a very efficient way. And so, to your point, if one school says, we're going to do this, we're going to put the standards here, we're going to do X, Y, and Z, but another school says, we're not going to do that, then you have some parents that are actually being empowered and then you have parents that are not. And nine times out of 10, it's going to be that low-performing school that is not going to put those standards and things on, on Power School, whereas you have that high-functioning well-oiled machine, they're going to hit those standards and they're going to make sure that parents are aware of things. So, how do we sort of transition and balance that? I know that's a heavy lift, but are we, how do we, how are we looking at that? Or should I be asking?
No, so it gets into our, our goal around operational effectiveness and efficiency, right? We know that, you heard me earlier say, we just launched data dashboards at all, all of our principals and the RISE dashboards are fed, if for lack of a better word, by Power School. Power School, mostly. And so, it means that if we're saying that our principals have, you know, live data, is it accurate data? And so, those are conversations that we can have around operational effectiveness. And if, if, you know, when I was giving the report, I talked about those three areas that we're gonna focus on, and data teams is one of them. And so, you know, when, when you think about a data teaming process, the, one of the first steps in any data team continuous improvement process is making sure that, one, you have the tools, two, that people know how to use the tools, and three, by the way, all of them as part of step one. And third part is making sure that people are updating the data on a regular basis. And so, that is work for us to focus on, as part of our, trying to have effective data teams in all our schools.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. The Hartford, the Hartford Board of Education authorized the superintendent to execute the contract with Power School Group LLC for the term delineated in the contract, ending July 1st, 2019, at a cost not to exceed $273,106, with option to renew annually. Is there a motion? It's been moved, there a second?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of?
Who's seconded?
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, I said so moved, and then.
Second.
I anticipated the second before it came. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Item number two, thank you, thank you. Second reading and adoption varies Hartford School policies. We have three policies. Policy 4118.21, Reporting of Abuse and Neglect. Policy 4118.3, Harassment Personnel, and Policy 5163, Harassment of Students. Madam Superintendent?
I want to ask Julie Wilde to give us the background, know that this is the second reading, and a lot of the work that has been done in the policy committee has also required council, council and its work that is very aligned to our response to the Office of the Child Advocate report.
Absolutely. So, good evening, everyone. I don't usually get to sit at this table. But Karen Taylor and the policy committee have been tirelessly working, and you've all, this is the second read of these policies, so I just wanted to quickly highlight a couple of changes, so that, you know, you understand what's going on here. The Policy 4118.21, Reporting of Abuse and Neglect, this change is in direct response to the OCA report and, you know, recommendations of the Child Advocate, and in this particular policy had been reviewed, revamped recently, but one of the concerns was that there might be a hole in reporting for our 18 to 21-year-old students, because we do have students in that age group in our secondary schools. And although the prior policy was compliant with the statutory scheme as it stands, we believe that we may need to make some changes to that statutory scheme, but we wanted to make sure that that particular group that was a focus of, of the OCA report was covered here. So, if you look at the policy, the important change to the language is under Section 3, What Must Be Reported. You'll see the change, "Reporting When An Employee Has Reasonable Cause To Suspect Or Believe That Any Child Under The Age Of 18 Years," and we've added, "Or Any Student Attending A Secondary School Regardless Of Age," and that was to encompass those students. So, that's the primary change here, and it's repeated, you know, throughout the policy where appropriate. And then on our harassment policies, these were reviewed similarly to our discrimination policies, which you all have already adopted, to check our compliance with Title IX and Title VI. And so, these are both the student and staff personnel and student policies, and just a change to highlight, other than, you know, kind of fleshing out some redundant language that we had in there, and streamlining the policies to make sure that they accurately reflected the board's intention, we've also added some language, and you'll see it on the, the first harassment policy under the bulleted list, to make sure that we are including forms of electronic communication. So, we've added, using computer systems, email, instant messaging, text messaging, blogging, or social networking websites, or any other form of electronic communications to engage in prohibited harassment by either students or staff. So, that was the key change there. And again, this is a second read, so we put, the policy committee puts it out there with the recommendation that the board adopt the second, accept the second reading and adopt the policies.
Thank you. All right. Is there any question or comments about these policies? And then we have three. No questions, no comments? All right. So, the Hartford Board of Education accepts the second reading and adopts the following three policies. I'll just read them again for the record. Policy 4118.21, Reporting of Abuse and Neglect. Policy 4118.3, Harassment in This Personnel, and Policy 5163, Harassment of a Student. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of adopting these policies, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. And now, we are here at the Consent Agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to take the consent agenda up as one item?
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, so we're gonna vote on the consent agenda as one item. All in favor of adopting the consent agenda?
Taking it up as one item.
As one item?
For me? Uh-huh, okay, I'm just making sure. All right. Tiffany got it. Tiffany gave me a counter on that one.
In favor of taking it up as one?
Yeah, I did that. Yep. All in favor of taking it up as one item, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes, ayes have it, motion carries. Consent Agenda passes, and we are not going to go into executive session, so we're gonna eliminate that item. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Wait, no quarter.
Okay. Ms. Oliver?
So, so we approved taking the consent agenda as one item, but I think we now need to approve it as, so. Need to vote on it. Yeah.
Yes, I thought I did that twice. So, no? 'Cause, 'cause when I said, "Hey, are we gonna take it up on one item?" Yes, and then, "Are we gonna vote on one item?"
But we, we didn't vote on, we voted on taking it up as one item.
Right. Okay.
I think we have to have a separate vote.
All right. So, are we gonna, again, are we going to vote on the consent agenda as one item? So, we, we voted to adopt it as the consent agenda, now we're voting on the consent agenda?
Yes.
All right. And so, as, all in favor of voting on the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye?
A motion to adopt.
Point of order.
Wait, let's, let me say this again, let me go over again. I took that up all at once. So, I said again, is there a motion to take the consent agenda up as one item? Yes. And then, that was one vote that we went through.
Right.
And so, then, I waited, 'cause Tiffany was talking, and I was, and that's what I said, so, we took the motion up, and so, let me, let's just do it again. Is there a motion to take the consent agenda up as one item? Is there a motion? Yes.
So moved.
It's been moved. All in favor of taking the consent agenda up as one item, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now, I thought I did that, forgive me. Now, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second, and all in favor of accepting the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? Then opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. All right. And now, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second? I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of adjourned in the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Think the ayes have it? We stand adjourned. And now, I get to go to the hospital.